There is no sound coming through.
Here's a main drum board. For who we manage to recognize this together.
I can't hear you. Not giving sound. We celebrated the, um, actually, we, uh, what do you want? This year, uh, a lot of people listening. Yeah, anybody who wants to, uh, tell their story. And here's some of our programs. If anyone wants to begin a relationship or not, we would agree that we have that after we go to our chairman. And we were hoping that we want to be true. The reason we want to bring some others to them, we have hope of, you know, we may.
She's not recognized.
Anyway, we probably want to go to people. And all of them are in the down country. And one of the reasons to do this is if not. They can hear back. From one of them. We started our program beginning in the newspaper. That actually was pretty cool. A lot of things, you know, pretty good. And I wish I could. That originally wasn't on the page. Basically, um, we thought that it's time. A plate made with meat. And now it's a long ago. I'm here all along. We've had some news. I talked to my. And that we may only have people. We just, we didn't know, we don't discuss. It was like a study from your case, but. Um. Um, then after this starts the.
Oh. One question to you. Yes, sir. There's the walkway. If it really happened in, like, I mean, that's not my fault, it's that I'm. If there's a place to walk away. Out. Society right now. They're very, quite separate. You start the story of those that aren't involved. It's all in that, not having any clue at third part. But that would be a third time. We don't try and. Story. Uh, I think that's how it's written. Really, I find something wrong.
Oh, okay. Uh, and then I propose that I can say that people choose a variety. Uh, and then I propose I, I can say that people choose a variety of stories. And genres. We do not want. That. Or. Uh. Okay. Yeah. What? So. Um, I. Yeah. I. I. Hmm. Um. Um. A lot of. Um. We. Um. Oh. Um. But. Okay. Bye. Thank you. Um, the library is important, alright. We did. Stacey. Um, you know, we're all. Um, with the library. With a little bit of library. Our. This kind of. Um, will be. At. The. But it does not. Um. Uh, the reason for first. But. Yeah. Because. Oh, we, oh, the very. Okay. Um, I need. Um, when you have that. Um. And that. This is. Yeah. I don't. Um. I don't know. My. This is. Yes. What's what? So. When. Very. I'm seeing them. Yes, thank you. Yes. That's. Yeah. Over. Actually. Talking. Um. On the. You. On the. I'm. That. What? I was coming. It's the perfect. There. There. The. Number one. After. Like, I guess. Sure, let's talk that. Now. First. Still. I have. Back. Or. I. So. Wait. You'll make the other. Very. Probably. Apple. Where we're talking at. Uh. And we got. Uh. He. And in some substance, the whole basis of. Uh. Really fine. Only. Best of our. Probably. For all. Uh. We. We use it. Uh. To best track. So whenever we do it. You. I think they're active. And so what we're looking for, actually. I mean. For. A twenty nine thousand dollars. Of all. Overall project. But. Our. Power. Our. So. We're trying to store it to. Uh, so there are several things I wanted to walk you through. So. On the app can, uh, has, uh, because of position. Window. It's already wired to do the regional windows. Actually, I think those windows are modified. But. Yeah. For sure. They know. Last thing, those were modified, but they did have. Um, and also closing. Uh. Store the break. Uh, the new order. Uh. But they have advised us. Uh, that burn break. Mission. Break. To provide that. Simply. To do. Building is. Need. Time. For. Fast technique. Um, so based on that, they're close. BP. Building. Trust. That is. If they have. Chat. To be. What? For power. Up load. But. We. Tell. Question. He. Uh, they're also posing to. Uh, use. Uh, faster rock. Uh, sensibly operating. We're going. To know. And store that. Nowhere. And so much. It is. Going there. First floor. Who's seeing that so used. Uh. More in passing. For. Like. You want to sort of. Act. Over. This. For. Our. And they've already moved entities. Uh, Ross. Uh. Let's go. Make sure. It's like. It's a. So I had broken down my staff before. At the show. At that. Window. Also. Uh. Nowhere. Uh. Both. So directing your attention to our downtown. God. And. Second. There. There's really generally driving. Emergent business. Like. You know. All possible. Uh, so what staff. Really requested. If that. We. That. Last. Note. What? Uh. These. For. Wood trim. On the window. I said two windows, but. Yeah. Sort. For. Character. Back. In the building. Useful power. But. Character. On the app can. Uh. As identified by. Eight. Like four. White. White. It. Um, they. The app. And it. Uh, would. Operating. Uh. Of. Of action. Nowhere. On. Back. That. White. That. By the. Blue. Red. For store. White. Or something. Power. Uh, we would. Add. First for red. App. Yep. For. Um. When that property. I. That. Or. So I elaborated myself for specifically. Good. The presentation. Uh. For the app can. Think general app can. General. Defense. Allow. You see. Come up here. Question. For. Yeah. Again. I'll be storing the windows for a best ability. Like window. Uh, to. Replace glass block. With nowhere. Uh, sooner they paint it. So. Useful power. Uh. So in some substance. We're looking for your feedback. Uh, whether. Support. Busted. Uh, twenty nine thousand dollars. Uh. Uh, this. Amount of money. Funds. Is budgeted. Uh, in our budget for twenty one, twenty two. We. Overdared. This is a map. In our. Sound rate program. It's last interest. I think thinking slowly see. So. Over. Years. Another project for app. People. Make the voice. So. Back. Definitely. For. Um, practice. That. Just. That's. Uh. And. Please. Oh. It is. But. Right now. Um, so that. I'm. A step forward. App. Yeah. Uh. That. People. There. With it. Hey. I. It. Don't. Happy. It's. Last. It. Oh. Yeah. That. For. About. To. Please. At. Sure. At. For. My. Okay. To. I'll. I'll put it. I'll. I'll. Yeah. I'll. The. Uh. The. The question. This. Does he can hear? I have only questions. And this was a. To get. It should. Definitely. Uh. These programs. Have. At the back. Particularly. Uh. For. Resolution. Uh. But. This definitely. It. It has. They. Are. And. Right. I. Do what they. Be. Who. At. Oh. But. How we. Uh, ask. Resolution. Would not come back. Do. That. Is. Uh. Support. So allow them to. See. With. Installation. From. Window. Station. That. Or. I think. Yeah, like. It's. For the. For. Yeah. I see. Um, personally. I. Excuse me, sir. Can you hear the mic? Yeah, just say your name. Uh, my name is Andy. I asked. As far as the library requested. I've been. Yeah. Yeah. I think. Um, I can. Library. Exactly. You know. About this. With the. That's. Yeah. Um, so. I guess. Open this to the question. For. Yeah. Uh. Recommendation. Down. Here. I. Uh. We. Want to. Yeah. My. That's. And a lot of country this stuff. I would love to present. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, it was. We got. I picked two of those. We. If we. Those are incorporated white. Black trim. Save the trip. From the morning, which is originally. We. We preserve the door in front. It could be. If they. It's true. You know. The. It is. Like. We like. Just. You see the little red flowers on top of the. Still. Uh. Billion plus chips. Probably. You know. We're. Doing. Do you hear any? Questions? Yeah. Really. First. I. So. Probably. Uh. The. Oh, like. That. Right. Okay. Twenty years. So. Probably. Um. Obviously. Remember. Yeah. I got it. Right off. The. Yeah. I think that's the most. Also. It's probably another. There. There's probably fifty different shades. Right? Just. Please. Just another thing on. On left side. We're really good. How. Right. The. The pictures. They do have grid lines. Cause we paint black. There. All wrong. We have. We know the stairs. Can't do it. On. The face. Top of that. Is. Children. Flowers. That they're still. They have that. We'll. We'll see the. They. There is a trim run. And that's. That's the same. What I can say. We just put the windows. Get your place. Under. Not that. It goes on. There's no choice. And plus their windows. They. Um. I'll leave. Rage. Some places. Do. That's. Okay. Of course. The sides of the building. I'm figuring out. Just that. For. One. But. Both sides. Over. We. Couple. On those. Which should be. Opposite sides. Pink. Uh. Most of it is. Shit. But. I'm like. There's space two. Space two is on. We do the one side wash. Very power washing. Other side. We want to stand this border. So. They know it from there. From the. Back after. It's. This is hideous. I'm starting from the front. This one. August. September. The latest. Up. On. On back. They. There's a little. It's also. There's little hidden windows. We. Which I want to. Future reference. People. Now. It's beautiful. Possibly. They said. Words. Something. You know. Those are my intentions. Is. That. Personally. Either of those. Or. Spirit. Or. Or. You see. Right off. Right. I know. Said either of those. Either. What? Well, no, I, the white, I personally don't have a problem.
You guys, you guys. Only. Always. This is. That's.
I go ahead. Um.
Uh, uh, about that.
Yeah.
You know what all these six points are, right?
Yes.
So the window be covered by.
It, it is true. Preserved.
Well, what it says in the report is that the aluminum. It's both on with. Their collective.
Right, there is wood trim on. That. Mean it's. The red picture. It's a steel beam. Basically on that. That was. There's a hole, top of that beam, it's. And, and it wasn't grand properly, so there is wood trim of all those, the original trim is on the bottom. So, top of it is two by eight. It's, it's taken. And they have aluminum.
If any, you can cover the aluminum and mark with what?
Yeah, double the aluminum. There's already wood around. If you all look at the building, it has wood trim on. Are you lucky?
Well, so maybe, Michael, you can, uh. Clarify this, because the aluminum and window casing being exposed is.
Right. Yeah. Open. What's round? Third. Side. Moving up. God. He don't. Have. Who? So. I. Go on. Right.
So you're both on the same page with that?
I thought it was actually. They have that aluminum.
Oh. You're.
Right, the whole.
I. Do. Right, this one. The trim. Cool. Right. Maybe this. Windows have. There's trim. The same. Yeah. Right, complete, we're into that.
Okay.
Sorry, well.
That's it. So it's, it's on overall of the.
Yes. Who, obviously.
So in terms of that color of the paint, uh, you know, I think whatever, maybe speaking with Amy. Color. So that is within the. Whether that's a bright white. Part of the.
I wouldn't do. It is. Be torn down with. So. I'd be bringing color share.
So. Now, in, in regards to your, uh, comment previously directed here again about, um. Retroactive reimbursement. And you have this work, you said that the, if the, your. Plan could open up on first, which is the week, um. Yesterday.
So, so.
Next Tuesday. But you can do all of this work.
Yeah. Enjoy it. Windows already. Already were. It's just wait. Those are the word. Rest of it is. Taking away whatever they. I'm gonna order for all mine. Terms already in place. Just up there.
I'm a little hesitant, we're not there yet. Who, uh, reimbursed this. What we. And then I think, well, I'm on the. Thank you.
Any follow up question? Uh, question. The, uh, the time of this. I. Uh, we said, uh. Um, we. Um, we. Uh, take it to. I didn't. So that I was. Um, we. Um. Uh. I've been. Just. Here. We just. That we. Thank you, Jesse, and thank you, John. On that, is that what you have to see? Is basically do something forward and. We write by. Bob, or Paul, and those are. Two months. Alright, so in order, um. The, uh, just even.
So if we're gonna ratify an agreement. Somebody, we, they denied it. Ratifying in a meeting for. Evidence that we supplied the.
Yeah, we never be wanting to change it, we rather. Condition, um, fact that the recommendations of staff were followed to a team. To see that crime.
Um, Mr. Chair, one suggestion. Dusty, um, if Mike could come back with a word of what, um, what next word? That says that the vision has complied along with the requirements that we set for. Building more way, there's more than that. Plus, they be conscious that all of each person will not. Okay, that would be important, all of that.
But be also important. One, just sometimes you see. The adjustments that you can build for. Time to.
So I, I wouldn't say a moment. He. All the. It's good. Uh, it's not as anybody, my first call, we. Same. And it's still in the customer condition. I just. Oh. That's why I proceed. Okay, then I'll, uh, take, uh, all the. All quarters. Uh. Yes.
Yeah.
Six four wing, six. Except they, except they need to be, uh. Alright, the, uh, third item on the, uh, where. Is the heartboard recommendation works. Part. We have on our chair, we can give our work in a room and heartboard number. For that. Probably. Probably.
No, I'm. I am she, and I'm here to speak on, on my heartboard. Um, who else here? Global better than Jim Weber. Um, yes. So I learned to, uh, the, uh, recognition from. Um. So we're here to express our concern with Centennial Park. The beautiful and impressive park was built in only five days, it's community and local. Corporation. This park has been a great attraction to people often, brings people and other towns to enjoy while it helps. Alright, here's your. Well, Centennial Park is huge on the first day, there is not even a self designed wood. The park is constructed out of wood. It was constructed all of them in nineteen eighty-two and is almost thirty year old. When the park was built, it's not assigned to the ADA compliance. It does not have access to wheelchair, having. For, for people with special needs. We have a fifteen twenty grand park yearly, but unfortunately, we could age this. We've not given any mandates on. We end the park work, but everyone should be aware of it. We are concerned about the integrity of the third year of structure of Centennial Park. We have made a difficult decision to actually take down the park and just find a new and improved ADA compliance in Centennial Park. We want to customize the park to meet our community. Everyone that goes to, to enjoy and have fun at our parks. We'd like to provide more choices and opportunities for everyone, regardless of age or disability. Our park board mission is to keep moving our parks so that everyone who needs. Can enjoy any dark parts of the world. All children, regardless of age, deserve to experience the excitement and the joy and enjoy that physical life. As we. Now, down with this COVID pandemic, we all need social interaction. I need to get outside and enjoy the fresh air. What better way than to go home in our beautiful parks? We want to be forward in the park board and make our playground accessible to people with special needs and have wheelchair access. We actually want all our playgrounds to be fun and inclusive for everyone. We would like all our playgrounds to have ramps, smooth surfaces, and seats for everyone. Nothing will close my under face, so I just need someone in a wheelchair, swinging on a stool. We would also like to include wild flower beds for nature and recreation. That. While the new customized media, ADA park will not be shared, we're hoping to open it up to local businesses and corporations. Possibly domain certain items or event conceptions within the park. We can build a park in basis based on the quality and cost. We have a park order, ask the mayor and the labor to approve this new ADA concept in Centennial Park. And implement this concept for the park in the future. With that. All the way up to question. Very beginning, preliminary. Amy, are you thinking about all this? Concept to the, the village board and open up to discussion and question.
We did a mystery. Say something. Perfectly. Just to bring to most attention that. Sharefest. When you remember yourself, which church? What church? We have the rest in the park. See, it means they have a best. They shouldn't. Need for a inclusive structure. The coolest thing you want to do. The. You're trying to. I'm not looking necessarily to share this project as. Have years to ask of you, whether you have a story. On the basis. We're already. My efforts of. Define what the structure may look like. Us. Or keep the art version very good in mind, too. So that the best appreciation. We have this. Realize structure. We have that. These are the others, especially. Who's. You might. This is. Be. But there is to make the accessibility. It's just for sharefest, you know, if you're sitting. We talk about this structure, we can talk about it. We can. Well. Keep off the project. We share, share present, we can take. Actually, the facility has. You know. Um, it's a tape. Yes. It's just hard here. He does not continue. We show. Community. So. We have to. Three thousand. Stay with this. Your. This, this now. At. We want to see us, see us. Community. So take our work, but. It's a first step. Our doors. We should. Do. I always. It's. Especially. Persons. Our key question, the comments. Um, not two months ago, somebody on Facebook. Brought an all recent. Part, I wish you saw somewhere else again. Also. Very. Nations, and they have also. Actually. Office and. That's. Small. Kids. Take. He was kind of. You know, my court had said. Why are you doing this on? So glad you're. Part. At least it's. From the office. I, I. Um, pardon me, this is what I have this. Look at all. Free parking place. For a private place on the road there. They, they.
It's like. No.
We. She's a man. Preparing a life. You know. So I. I don't know. Ask this. We're missing. I know. That. You started these guys. But they were. On the. I didn't find them. We can be so. Your friends. So. So here's the thing. I. The. Part. I'm. I'm. So.
I think.
What?
I'm sorry, I. Could you hear me?
And Aaron Harper, manager. Uh, baby. Got there. They hit the wagon to Peterson Park. And on her fifty nine.
You. I'm. Very. It's. Especially, especially. And. I. It did have many. It's sure. So. It's. And right. So. So. I like it. Yeah. I'm talking. And I. I'm. Black. Sorry. Sorry.
Let's leave it up. Yeah. I swear this is, this is a. It's a great idea, and we need to start to follow the norm. And we can do it all with this one. Looking forward to very new marks. This is. Revelation existing parts. They're. Yeah. Set, uh, I'm. Still do. I'm reading it so. The. Bird, my test is. But yeah, there's a. Out of. The line. Which is. To. Do you hear me? I'm. I'm. But I'm. I didn't. I. I'm. I look at. Listen to me.
Maybe the. Sure, I can right now. I'm twenty percent and like also just. So quickly, congratulations on your, what you have heard, this employment and.
What we have heard is employment and suggest that not only. Many parks that we're talking about. Will be now wanting to plan for all of our. Um, just obviously it's a different meeting. Your process, we're going to run your process. Here, so I'm not the public to go out. Stressing out, but it's going to be taken down to me here. Whether it's a public meeting, or a lot of so. Fifty years or two year process. Thank you. I don't know what you guys are noticing, maybe start up, but. I'm just being brave now. Um, we got the example, of course, there's lots of vehicles out there of ADA compliant. That I don't have to. Um, but like in my hometown, they have one called ADA compliant park that. I know people who are very involved in that process. Being the best part of our community, like our. Very good, very senior to the ability in and we got the office as well, so. We um, and we laugh as well, our team members, like our high power. And we took them a couple years. And they did have corporate fundraising, they got great chunks of change from the corporation. But did by chance, our success, so we really hope we can. You know, because the fundraising going and people. People knowing, people at corporation. We think that we. Very good. Actually, that's not a corporation. Kind of really hoping. Really great part. This is the. That is our legendary part for me. Basically, I'm all into it. Thank you.
Come on, I don't want to. Did you good, did you say anything or anything?
I I can't hear, can you hear me? Oh, you can. Um, like, like Gina said, you know, this is not going to be a quick fix. Um, what we're trying to do is, uh, we just want to get the village board's approval so we can move. We can move forward and, uh, go ahead and try to get grants and stuff. Right now, like the Odsled Grant, uh, just came through, so we're going to try for next year. And we know that the, uh, we want to plan to have money for the parks for the next year. And we just want everyone aware of what we're doing. We don't want to, you know, say we're taking down a park. No, we want to. Move phases.
You're not, you're not.
Can you still hear me? I I gotta.
We'll just say that Gina did an excellent job here. We appreciate your participation. Alright, thank you for. Yeah. That will move to the next September item, which is the term of the selected parties. I'm waiting for the, um. I'm expecting fully yours. Thank you, this title. Goodbye.
I have some things for you that I'm really okay with. For our cases. It does work like three thousand five hundred. How about same. So back in twenty seventeen. Uh, when we were. On creepy. Black and dark and we had a really good, the members. Union expanding and putting up. Their third. Um, this. So the achievement that is the contract. Um. At that time, uh, it's actually the most completely. The opportunity program. Um, but that was very well. And it 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 landed to me. New office. And this is what brought us here. Um, so there are still ways that they can. Uh, the anniversary day, but they just. That was, uh, over ten days. I mean, chocolate is a birthday at fifty percent of the gift. That's. Great. Like this is for our situation, um. Just following. The thing about. People. Part is that no, very good. But the union is actually very. Besides. An initiative contribution, they want that spent well, no change around. But they want to change the third floor house. The reason for wanting that change is that people often there so like third floor house. Uh, we live for two years, so playing or not playing. So what they're, uh, proposing is to. For control. On the. Uh, which is a different side of their cross rated three. For the first. We started to remain that. And I hope that it will not be too late, but maybe running this, um, allocate. Questions to board once you pass the. Well, it is. Because, um. The number of hours. Thirty-four is. The. The number of hours over ninety days after. Eight hours. Or eight hours. Actually, I would say. The stick. The. So. And this. Don't.
Oh, sure.
No, no, no.
So this is changing.
Um. You know. It doesn't change me. Um, compared to. In in the original. That had given up. Thirty-four hours. Lots of early design. But it's just sad, there's even though thirty-four hours. Even. There. But so much that to play. Because even the hours, it's like we, the most habitable years. Are when they. Um, I think.
Rusty Mason? Rusty. Rusty, we're done. Rusty Byrne? Rusty, man.
No question.
Okay, next, next item on the agenda is, um. As everybody knows, we do work in, uh, the marketing group all together. Um, and they had a better presentation that they, um, gave to staff and myself. Uh, something that I really. About the meetings part of the long. Um, so they were asking whether they could present to us, so I suggested they present to us. Very, uh, fortunately, they were currently, fortunately, they're currently from another, um, presentation at the Kansas City. So I asked them to make a, uh, short video presentation of their, of their proposal. Um, their proposal came through and, uh, in the interest of time, um, I asked them to show that presentation. Um. Show that presentation to the board of trustees and the public. Um, we will, uh, give a abbreviated version over send, uh, via Zoom. Uh, we will post the presentation, uh, one second. They'll watch it as, uh, at the leisure, so. We're going to show the first three minutes of the presentation. We're going to stick to, uh, fifteen, twenty seconds.
Ready? Hi there, I'm Rachel Smith. I'm here with my partner Marissa Schultz from All Together. We are working with Josh Bloom from the Clue Group on a marketing strategy for the village. Last week, our team presented our strategic direction for marketing communications to Jim, Lori, Michael, and Mayor Gartner. They asked that we give you a preview of some of our recommendations so that you all have some time to digest and think about all the good questions you want to ask us when we're back on June fourteenth. We are currently on a flight back from Kansas City, so we are sad that we can't be there in person or in, you know, live. This is a recording, but, um, if you have specific questions for us, please send them up to staff and we can, you know, either get back to you over email or address them in the next meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and share. And then. Full screen. Okay. So. Few things we're going to cover, we're going to talk about some strengths and challenges. We're going to cover your market position, uh, your message and audience that we should be speaking to, some options for brand direction, and then marketing priorities. So from all the engagement and background research that we've done, uh, they helped shape, you know, where we're at now, what we think should be be done. Um, we started our background research with a site visit where we treated our site visit as we were visitors trying to, um, make the most of Antioch. And so we looked at what was online, what's a visit, visit Lake County, what are they telling us to do in Antioch? And we went to, um, Blarney, we didn't go to Blarney Island, but we, you know, we saw where you would go to Blarney Island. Um, we were downtown, we went on a hike, we saw the boardwalk, we saw the ban shell, all parts of things that make this place wonderful. Um, we also talked to a ton of people, uh, we had focus groups with, you know, all sorts of slices of life of, um, people in Antioch from the school district to the economic development. Force to, you know, fire and police. We put out a survey, um, trying to get to the heart of what makes this place unique and got a lot of great responses about, you know, how people like to spend their time here and how they would talk about this place or show someone this place if they were visiting. We had nine one-on-one sessions with board trustees, so hopefully you all know who we are and remember what we're doing. Um, and then a bunch of creative internal sessions where we brainstormed, what does all this mean, um, and what, where should we go from here? One of my favorite quotes from the survey was that communications must be consistent, transparent, and personal. And I love that, and I feel like that really captures our goal here to make it consistent, transparent, and personal. Um, so, as I mentioned, we gave this presentation last week, this is a little bit shorter, we wanted to make it more concise, not take up so much of your time. So consolidated some of our, the strengths and challenges that we heard, uh, throughout all of our engagement. Um, first.
Fast forward some of the back. Watch the whole video. Actual representation of the directions of the.
Trunks and antique stores, oops. We can, can. And crafted a comprehensive brand story for Antioch. Um, which, uh, I think really captures what's so unique about your community and can be used in a variety of marketing initiatives and campaigns. So I'd like to read that now, we found that it's really helpful to kind of read through it, um, and you can hear me reading it and read it on the screen as well. Whether you're here for a lifetime or a day, Antioch is a place to breathe easy. Its access to the chain of lakes and thousands of acres of wooded preserves, coupled with its laid-back, small-town vibes, are an antidote for the overloaded. Lose yourself in nature by hiking the preserves, horseback riding, and cross-country skiing along the state park trails, or simply looking up at the hundreds of stars in our expansive night skies. Make your way down Main Street, taking in the vintage vibes of the historic buildings, home to locally owned bars and coffee shops, restaurants, and antique stores, or connect to the people that make this place feel like home at one of Antioch's concerts, parades, or events that fill the streets and parks. While being in Antioch can feel like a walk down memory lane, you'll also experience an energy pointing to the future, to investment in downtown, small business and industries, and the next generation of people and families that will continue to keep Antioch authentic by nature. So with that, we wanted to now talk a little bit about your tagline, Authentic By Nature. And, you know, in a lot of the focus groups, we heard that some people really like it and connect to it, and others don't feel like they're a true connection to it. Many voice that this tagline doesn't differentiate Antioch or speak to its downtown enough. Um, and that authentic can oftentimes, and is oftentimes be overused in, um, community marketing, especially communities, um, in the Chicago region, who maybe you're seen as your competitors. So we took a look at the tagline, and we are proposing expanding on that. So keeping authentic by nature, because it is celebrated and recognized in your community, but using it in a more flexible application. In terms of a messaging framework, which will provide the platform or jumping off point for how you'll talk about Antioch in relation to the multiple audiences and those target audiences I just went through. It's a singular idea that communicates your brand story that we just read through, but it's executed in a way that it's flexible and it can change based on the audience or what you're talking about. So we've included some examples here using those, the words that we use in our core messaging. That's authentic by nature, relaxed by nature, collective, storied, and nostalgic by nature.
Good, and then now we're going to talk a little bit about the current logo. So the current logo is, it's fairly detailed. Um, it has, you know, many colors and elements, and we found that in different applications where it's being used currently, it doesn't scale that well. The typeface, papyrus, it's a little bit dated. Um, and, you know, the focus on the natural elements in the logo, uh, it doesn't speak to one of your main differentiators, which is downtown. And so we looked at, you know, two simple updates of this logo, first being a very modest update. It keeps the same form as the original logo, but it updates the typeface to be a little bit more timeless. Uh, the forms are more simplified, the color palette is largely the same, but just a little bit more mature. And then we took things one step further in this next direction. You know, th- this maintains the leaf element from the logo, but it moves it to the A instead of the O, which gives everything a little bit more space to breathe. It removes the wavy lines and instead implies water from the kind of the swoosh in the A and the color and the type. The colors are similar, but a little bit more elevated, um, and the number of colors in the logo are reduced. So while this refined version of the logo doesn't literally reference downtown, the nostalgic quality of the typeface and the simplified mark speaks to the easygoing character we found in this community. Um, you'll notice that it doesn't say Village of Antioch, and I know that reading through your past materials, that was something that was, you know, added to the current logo after the fact. But I want to challenge that a little bit as we think about creating a system of sub-brands. This should be the identity of the place as a whole, not Village Hall. Um, and so by using this logo as the core identity of their place, you can create a system of sub-brands to represent the different tax bodies that operate here, from the village, to the library, to the township. And this both, you know, brings them all together as working for the betterment of one Antioch collectively. Um, but it also visually indicates that they are separate entities. Um, and can we force all of these entities to change their logo? No, we can't. But when we talked to them, there was definitely interest in helping to communicate that they're all working together and that they're all part, we're all part of the same community. And so we think that there is potential here to bring a lot of folks together on this front. So with that, we're going to move on to some marketing priorities. We have established four key priorities that we think should be the focus of the rest of our work. We'll describe each of these in a bit more detail, but as of now, these are just baseline recommendations and goals. Our next steps will be to outline these into actionable items that we can help implement. The first priority is really a guiding principle. We mentioned that your target audience is split between visitors and residents, but we think your initial focus really needs to be on improving communications among current residents so they can start to act as brand ambassadors or the character in the story of this place. To do that, we want to focus on what's called inbound marketing. That means earning attention organically by creating positive content that celebrates the stories we've identified with strong imagery. The idea here is to double dip, to create content that resonates with residents, but can also be marketed more broadly. Improving press and public relations is also a priority, whether that's having stories ready to share with news outlets or utilizing the social media network of the people who, you know, work for the village or represent the village, you all as, you know, board trustees and and mayor, uh, to help spread those stories and and start to gain buzz. Um, you know, the village channels, but also the people behind the village. The investments that you're making in the downtown beautification process is one of those stories that we think you can start to share more widely as some ideas start to solidify. This second priority. This second priority is really a biggie. Uh, we need a place to communicate collaboratively, a central hub of information that celebrates all there is to do and see in this place. And while the village should support this financially and otherwise, this type of information shouldn't live on village website or social channels. The challenge is that this space is already crowded. The goal is to bring together all of the groups that are already operating under one communications umbrella. So bringing together the downtown task force, the chamber, connections magazine, maybe even shop Antioch, under a new central hub, one that can promote this place holistically, without boundaries of chamber members versus not chamber members, you know, village versus township, et cetera. So to do this successfully, we believe you need to increase staff capacity by bringing on a full-time marketing communications person. This person should be helping to improve the village communications, but more importantly, uh, promoting and marketing Antioch as a whole. Um, we think, as we mentioned, connections magazine physically and digitally should be restructured to support the central hub. Um, today. And then we heard over and over again that um you need a collaborative calendar, sorry, I got lost in my slides. You need a collaborative calendar that will allow uh different entities to contribute, filter, and sort, and that can be live on the the central hub's website. Uh, we heard that you need a weekly newsletter, and that newsletter should come from the central hub and be disseminated via different channels. Now, even looking at ways that the e-newsletter can be printed and posted in key locations for folks who are not online. Uh, we wanna create different itineraries for different audiences about what to do in Antioch. Itineraries that will be useful for residents and visitors, because we spoke to plenty of residents who didn't know about all there is to offer in this community from a recreational perspective. Um, and then through all communication materials, start using a design language that helps communicate connections between entities and emphasizes Antioch as a whole. Um, priority three is improve digital communications. This really runs through all of your priorities. Uh, we think that starts by separating village communications from central hub communications. You know, the village should be posting municipal information that's relevant and useful for Antioch residents. Think, you know, your snow tips post. That information isn't gonna be relevant to visitors, and so we wanna create this, the separation between those two, between the central hub that can speak to both people and the village that's really about municipal information. Um, we also wanna put a face to the Facebook. We know that it can be divisive on Facebook and that people have a lot of opinions and it's easy to share them on Facebook. Uh, and that one way to counter this is by, you know, making it so that they're not just yelling at the void. They know the person who's operating the Facebook page, and that, you know, while that person shouldn't be taking critique personally, I think it can help to to have it be more personal and knowing that when I'm shouting angrily into the Facebook void, there's a person behind it, um, that's that's reading this information that isn't just the village as a whole. Um, you know, the, the central hub channels, they should be posting information that celebrates this place and shares information about how to experience Antioch as a resident or a visitor. Uh, by creating content that celebrates this place, you can boost that content so it can be seen by people outside of Antioch as well as residents. So it goes back to the double dipping. There can still be sharing and cross-promoting between accounts, but it helps clear up the question of, you know, should the village be supporting and sharing individual businesses? And then finally, what we've heard is that the events are great, but we've also heard that some of them feel pretty dated, and some events don't help businesses as much as they could. So we wanna dive deeper in the subject and help y'all come up with a holistic look at all recurring events that happen in Antioch regardless of host, and ask residents and business owners, which do you attend, which work for your business, what needs to be reworked? And from there, we can make some recommendations about how to redesign certain programs to embrace the character and stories of this place in a way that can be marketed to a more regional audience. Um, we think you should update your brand, as we mentioned, and once we do, we'd love to see that reflected in the downtown streetscape. Um, we, we hope to work with Lakota on that part of the plan, but really think now is the time. As you're investing in your downtown, you're gonna be making investments in your physical spaces. Now is the time to to rethink the look and feel of of your brand as a whole. Um, but frankly, a full streetscape redesign and downtown beautification effort will take years. And so we wanna look for some short-term, temporary ways to activate public spaces downtown that help to embrace the character of this place. So we think the alleyways downtown that you have are a great first opportunity for that and wanna look a little bit further. So, next steps. We are moving forward with brand photography in the next month, speak to that a little bit more in a second. Um, we will be back to speak to you all at June fourteenth um and get your input on this before we go any further. Um, once we get feedback from you all, we'll start to flesh out these ideas into more concrete initiatives. Uh, at the same time, we'll be moving forward with whichever design direction you choose and putting together some brand guidelines and collateral designs. And we'll work with you all to, you know, identify which which items will be best for us to focus on in terms of collateral. And then with those items in place, we'll outline how to get it all done, who needs to be brought on board to help. Um, we'll check in with staff throughout the process, we've got weekly, bi-weekly needing setup, um, but we're hoping to present final materials in early August. I know, um, I put August 12th here, Laura told me the the exact date might be changing, so. Um, but we hope to be back to you all at the end of the summer with um a toolkit and best practices of things to use. And then I teased at photography, we're working with a photographer named Carol Lynn who uh lives in the Lake County region, and she has an aesthetic that really matches the character that we've heard about that, this community, and so we are excited to um work with her to get some beautiful pictures of Antioch that you all can start to use in your marketing. So, that is what we have. We wish we could hear all the questions that you have and give you really insightful answers for them. But um we asked that you, you know, talk through any questions and then, you know, pass them on to staff. They'll pass them back to us, and we can either send you uh answers via via email or just speak to them uh during the next meeting. So appreciate your time, excited to see you in person, in in person soon.
Take care.
Alright, next item on the working of business agenda is the um annual meeting schedule. This was um an amendment that I uh asked to, to the um agenda tonight. Uh, basically, it would be um an asking with our meeting schedule, um consistent scheduling. Some considerations for uh scheduling with the county. Um, and I know that historically, Mondays, they end to Wednesday. Weeks for Wednesday evenings. For several reasons, I can't explain this, but we go through this, and then I also want to change the the procedure of the meetings to that, to where there's more meetings a month, so um, we don't have the same situation that occurred earlier with SAG brands. So we have to wait a few group days to start to conduct this every two weeks. The meeting tied up to six thirty PM, and we call the two of the whole meeting approximately six thirty, seven PM. We always kind of go right during the work business, instead of having um one long town meeting and one long Uh, with that, I open up discussion. So I'm looking for some discussion of all the board meetings that we would make the meetings on the every Monday, every, the second and fourth Wednesdays and Mondays at six thirty PM. Uh, we have a counting into area of order, so. With that, I will go to the trustees for discussions, trustee Girth. Um, I think you're already aware of my position on this. I think you're actually right, but you have too many to run. But I also think that initially, in the starting phase, I had seen some of my faces. Um, so I would, I would agree with you. I consider the idea of that as important. Especially a thousand back, uh, I understand that I stick to another, to not my staple.
You know, I was thinking about this for a long time. In the period of lived in meetings, you can get reportedly back at all times. The next one is one time to ask staff. Then we won't be sitting at meetings, the laws are very tight with answering questions in your practice. So, if you're able now, and plus you're in fact, that gives favors. But I think the past meeting, compared to here, there are a lot of questions for the answer private. The staff members instead of the meeting, because everybody's time is valuable. If you're able to handle that. We might get attached. Thirteen years.
Thank you, buddy. Does he hear?
Just to clarify, we're doing a town meeting. The expectation that the board meeting, uh, also needs to vote, but I'd be concerned that we haven't had time to get questions, but we can back them in and follow up.
Well, so um one answer you have made is that items that are in the town meeting, the meeting items are actually going on at the um, the subsidy to be saved, so that it's our items of the day. So I'm very pleased if it's done by staff that is going to tie in the board meeting two weeks in the event. I have a discussion. We have a discussion. So, uh, just about the fusion, uh, until we go on, I think fourteen, very good meeting. So the next four meeting, uh, go down. Alright, and um the last item on the agenda is um discussion uh, very important, doing section one, there's five, there's twelve, the right council. Um, this is uh now I would ask that our those term, uh, Jay Sally explained, uh, what your role is. Sure, we trust you, here's the calls that is happening, I recall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and honestly, trustee Girth, if ever having that honest, so in the beginning of, I'm sorry. In the beginning of the show, there was a legislative council appointment office. And in the beginning, we recently had meeting with your prior council, you had not had a legislative council. But they're saying this came out, um, some time ago, the key conflict between the mayor and the board meeting members and corporate people. Um, so I have service on this to the council, and you understand when they are needed. Um, I also feel that if times last, or if possible, you know, large spots to we just have, like, you basically run into often. That there's often, that's not often, it's service. Third, the practice, the various, uh, key, or different divisions of the constitution. But for this, you have two people, sometimes they do exactly. So it was just a proposition, and there was something that we discussed. And again, this is open, it's an idea that we talked with chair and broader go forward to be discussed with the corporate orders, because it hadn't been used in some time. It's done, it's cost, and ultimately, I hold an obligation to the village that needs to what you call, I'll make sure we'll have a happy four. And have to service each one of you in the best interest of the village. I'm Mr. Chair, I'm for the next one. I'm going to go with this, at this point, we're going to have to discuss your questions from trustees and trustee Girth. I don't think we ever fully employed this by actually hiring a certain council, like, we don't do the sandwich and board, just to then we will be there a little bit, um, if I did me correctly. And um maybe center two, so. I'm assuming the bridge to the council. I also understand that if you think about the idea of work, the important goal on that can be established, so that someone will be issued, so what is it, waters, the signpost? If I may, it's exactly just you're saying, you're saying that much more hard. Um, all you have to do is ask a motion to revoke this order, and then go back, go back, we just rewrite the order. It's essentially a course, then it's not a bad program. Does he listen? So, I like those. Does he hear? You're there. Does he run? Does he go to the end?
Um, and else, we will again, um, we push for the agenda of two fourteen, meaning for the session. At this time. This time, I open this um for the business, I asked.
Um, I just have to ask, we're very short in this special session tonight, to talk about this.
I have a motion to go to the second. I gave you.
Again, sorry, I've been talking. Of course, thank you. So, um, we can, yeah, I understand, I didn't get a lot of customer practice work. Um, I didn't see people go to like a manager, or basically close out all the business, take over for the chair and come back. So that's what you're having. I don't know the customer practices that you're, obviously have it, um, but okay, we've done, we've done, we've been meeting, we've been talking, we've been working with the picture business. Because he has a good reputation on the chair, not by the word, and it's probably more action, other than thank you. That, I have no. Uh, yes, so I believe, um, we would be notified if chair was like, don't I know, because you know her, I think. I was just going to go to the chair after we've done a go session, and then the now, they're home. Um, but I think that it's, at this point, I would be right, for a motion to return to that session for real estate purposes, so, correct the difference.
So then you have to deal with the other.
I have a motion to return to the session.
Or, that's what we have for the next.
So it's for real estate, only for real estate. And is that the end of the service, because they're very expensive.
Uh, there could be some for discussion regarding offers to, uh, that.
How second?
So now, motion made by, uh, trustee Buber, second by, uh, trustee Demania, any further discussion? And now, uh, we're just making a motion. And the motion for, uh, individual, uh, uh, besides the offer to acquire.
Why are you asking for any, uh? Why, why am I?
No, 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 I asked, I was, uh, I was actually trying to ask you a question before. I said, I go over to people, um, this is here, uh, once, when you have this, 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 this.
Don't object, and we're just questioning why we're going with that. Everybody caught?
All right, now we go to that, uh, we have a roll home. Yes?
Yeah. Yeah.
Please, only ask the, uh, for, for the now, uh, as you hear.